Let me call this meeting to order of the Bristol, Tennessee City Council for the meeting February 6, 2018. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Rinning?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Here.
Councilwoman Keen?
Here.
Councilwoman Powers?
Here.
Mayor Yang?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities we have to speak on behalf of city business this evening, and each of you will have that opportunity. A sheet explaining those opportunities was provided upon entering the meeting room. I have that here. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet was provided earlier as you entered council chambers for those individuals desiring to address council during Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. So tonight, for invocation and pledge, I'd like to ask Chad Keen, councilman, to lead us in our invocation. Following our invocation, I've asked Councilwoman Lee Powers, or Councilwoman Lee Powers, to lead us in the pledge. If you would, please stand with us.
Bow our heads, please. Father, as we pause in our meeting to give thanks and ask for thanks for everything that you have given to us, we ask that you look over our citizens throughout the city, those that are in need, those that are suffering, place your healing hands to them, give them comfort as they go through the struggles that they are enduring. Father, as we go through our meeting today, we ask for your guidance. Help us to know the right decisions to make, and we ask that you bless our city in every way. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do you have any additional items to add to the agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
All right. We have no proclamations or recognitions on this evening's agenda, so first will be a presentation which we are actually scheduled to postpone. Mr. Matt Hill was prepared to present our caffer, and he will be coming next month. So we're sad that he couldn't be with us tonight, but we'll look forward to that presentation We have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. The public hearing is hereby open for Ordinance 18-1, amending the zoning ordinance by adding design standards for construction in the B-1A and B-1B commercial districts. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As you recall, during the first reading of Ordinance 18-1 in January, the original format was amended. The recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission was for the B-1B district to allow general merchandise stores such as a Dollar General store and similar business to be used as a use or to be allowed as a use by right. The zoning text amendment also established design standard overlay for the B-1A and the B-1B districts. After some debate and consideration at the last meeting, the language to allow the general merchandise stores was eliminated or deleted. The balance of Ordinance 18-1 went forward with a recommendation of design standards for the B-1A and the B-1B districts. As is required by state law, any change in the Planning Commission's original recommendation, which took place in November, must be resubmitted back to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did reconsider this matter at their January 15 meeting, and by a vote of six to three, recommended that the original language that was approved during the November 20 meeting remain. This moves forward now to public hearing and then consideration on second reading. Staff is here. Blake Ayler, our zoning administrator, is here if you have any specific questions regarding this or need additional information.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making comments. I don't see anyone. All right. So seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next is our Appearance of Citizens. This item of our agenda provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not part of the printed agenda for consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made since, in most cases, the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to this concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual, and groups are encouraged to select a spokesman to represent them. I've been provided a list of individuals desiring to address council this evening, and first we have Ms. Whitaker.
Last summer, five teenage boys watched, just stood and watched, as a disabled man drowned in a Florida pond. And they did nothing to help save that man's life, even though he screamed for help. And you are just as bad. You have stood by and watched me struggle and fight for my life in the face of public safety problems. And you have done nothing substantive to help save my life, even though I have screamed for help for you day after day after day. How do you live with yourself? How do you sleep at night? Stop cheating me. Stop defrauding me. I am a long-term faithful taxpayer. I pay for my public safety services. I desperately need them. Stop cheating me. Stop defrauding me. Stop!
Next, we have Mr. Don Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council and city staff. I'm Don Ashley. I live at 709 Navajo Trail in Bristol, Virginia, that faraway place. I want to share with you tonight a few comments, but I specifically want to ask you to consider passing a proclamation setting aside February 13 of 2019. Now, that's a year from now, as Tennessee Ernie Ford Day. This is a Wednesday. By doing so, you would let various groups and agencies know the exact date of his 100th anniversary of his birth, and maybe these groups could plan on building some events to honor Tennessee Ernie Ford. Back in 2013, the Host and Stamp Club passed a resolution asking the Citizens Advisory Committee to consider issuing a postage stamp for Tennessee Ernie Ford. We sent off the unanimous resolution and received back a response that they would consider it. Also, back in 2013, the Bristol, Virginia City Council also passed a similar resolution, sent it off, and got a response back that it would be considered. You may recall, back several years ago, the Bristol, Tennessee City Council and the Believe in Bristol group at that time headed by Christina Blovins, were also asked to consider doing something for Tennessee Ernie Ford. Last year, I met with Jessica Turner at BSCMA. As you know, she has left, and Dr. Renee Rogers is now the director, and I've met with her several times, to see if they might consider doing something also. They're very receptive. I've also met with Leah Ross and Beth Reinhardt at the Chamber of Commerce and pitched the idea to them, and they're very receptive also. Just last month, the Bristol Historical Association, led by Brenda Otis, passed a resolution for the stamp also and has sent it off. The Knoxville Philatelic Society passed a resolution for the stamp also just last month. I spoke with Tommy Barker, the Bristol, Tennessee postmaster, about getting a special Ernie postmark for the date February 13, 2019, to mark that date with a special council, and he's checking on that. Now, whether or not we get a stamp or not, or whether or not we don't get a postmark or not, I can envision that particular week a year from now, or maybe even the Paramount, the Cameo might even run Tennessee Ernie Ford variety shows. We may have the Ford House be open all week long. I can see the BSCMA having Ernie's exhibit upgraded and shown, and possibly even having Ernie's only surviving son come back to Bristol and maybe spend some time and talk about his famous father. But whether or not we actually, you know, get the stamp and the postmark, we should consider the importance of that date. I would hope that our city managers, Mr. Sora and Mr. Eads, could draft up a proclamation for our mayors to sign and set aside February 13, 2019, as Tennessee Ernie Ford Day. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. Eddie Mayberry.
Mayor Yang, council. I'm Eddie Mayberry, live 109 Sunnybrook Drive. I am here once again on behalf of the citizens of the Sunnybrook subdivision, and I will claim that we are being, I guess, unduly represented also by the city of Bristol as it concerned the intimate treasures. We have, I guess, done as much as we are capable and able to do and on our behalf, and all we have gotten out of the council here is that they can't do anything at all. There's roughly 130 homes in that area that pays up with over $1 million in tax per year. And it seems and appears that the council and others are unconcerned about those taxpayers' favor of a business that may or may not arrive there. But in the meantime, as we are scuffling to pay our lawyers that represents us, Bristol, Tennessee is paying for a lawyer to represent them in the case that arose out of that April 20th meeting at the zoning board. And I don't believe that the city council, or mayor, or the city manager and others should be spending taxpayers' money for representation while they are rolling over on the 130 homes, 192 names that I had on our report. I would love very much for you, Mayor Yang, to address this issue, get with me in particular, because we need to know where we are going with this tragic calamity we are confronted with as people of that Sunnybrook subdivision. I don't know whether a lot of people knew some of the details that was dealing with this, but I'm sure that tonight, over the television stations that is going out, that because of what the zoning board had done is what got us basically in this predicament that we are in. And there need to be some things done to expedite and to move this thing on, that the citizens of the Sunnybrook subdivision not have to continue to bear the burden that they are bearing simply because it's the making of the council zoning board and those that represent the zoning board.
Is there anyone else that would like to take time during Appearance of Citizens tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. We have no appointments on this evening's agenda, so we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have three ordinances. First, we have Ordinance 18-2, abandoning an unnamed public alley right-of-way. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize Ordinance 18-2?
Yes, Mayor, this item is considered on first reading this evening to abandon an unopened and unnamed public alley right-of-way running east from Glendale Street to another public alley that's oriented in a north-south direction. Properties at 1013, 1043, 1051, and 1027 Glendale Street are owned by the Brown Buie Investment LLC. They plan to combine the properties and build 12 townhouses. I think with that, I'm going to ask our transportation engineer, David Metzger, to come forward and detail the issue. The Planning Commission, while he's coming to the podium, the Planning Commission considered this at their January 22 meeting and gave favorable recommendation to the abandonment. If approved on first reading, then it'll be considered at our March 6 meeting on second reading.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Brought to us this evening, as Mr. Sora indicated, on first reading is an ordinance to abandon an unopened and unnamed alley right-of-way in the Piedmont Edition subdivision near Anderson School. Referring to the map on the screen, this is the area in question. You can see Anderson Elementary School off to the right, so this is approximately one block west of the school. The properties that are outlined in the heavy black line are the properties that are currently owned by the company that is requesting the abandonment of the alley, and the alley in question is the one that's shown in the heavy black. This does connect to another alley that runs north and south or up and down as you're looking at it on the screen. The north-south alley is open to traffic. The one that is proposed for abandonment is not open to traffic, and as far as our records can tell, has never been open to traffic. Looking at this on an aerial photograph scale, you can see the properties that are owned by the requesting party outlined in yellow and the alley requested for abandonment shown in heavy yellow. This drawing shows the other residences that are on that block. You do have seven other houses that are not owned by the people who are asking for the abandonment in question. This photograph shows eight houses. One of those has since been demolished since the time this aerial photograph was taken. The intent of the ordinance, I'm sorry, the intent of the abandonment is to allow these properties to be combined into a single parcel by this company to allow the construction of 12 townhouses, which is permitted in the R3 zone that has been applied to this property for many years. Looking at this particular picture, and in this picture, north is to the left, this would show if the alley were abandoned, that the 12 townhouses could be constructed as a single building. If the alley were not abandoned, looking at the next picture, it would be constructed as two buildings with each of them having six units each. And so, the failure to abandon the alley right-of-way does not necessarily stop the project. What it does change is its layout and configuration. And you can see in both of these drawings, Glen Street is to the right. The dark area on these drawings is the parking lot, and their access would be off of Glen Street, not off of Glendale. They initially asked for access off of Glendale, and staff told them it would work better on Glen Street because of site distance. We have done a survey of the alley as far as to determine if there are any utilities in this alley. We have found none, either above ground or underground. Typically, when the city abandons a right-of-way, a stormwater and utility easement is retained. In this particular case, staff is recommending that such an easement not be retained so that it would facilitate the redevelopment of this property, that if the alley is abandoned, then easements wouldn't be in the way of constructing it as a single large 12-unit building. We did contact the adjacent property owners in this block, of which there are seven other residences. Six of them are owner-occupied, one is not. They were asked, they were actually sent a questionnaire in the mail, said, "Are you in favor of this alley abandonment, yes or no?", explained to them what the general purpose was. What this slide has shown is we did get one response back, that you can see there on the property whose address is circled in green, that they did not object to the abandonment. The three properties whose addresses are circled in red did object to the abandonment, and also included comments that are in your packet that showed that they were not in favor of the townhouse project. However, as I pointed out, not abandoning the alley does not stop the townhouse project. It just changes its configuration. This last slide here that I have to show you, this is a slide that was taken just before Christmas, but it shows the alley right-of-way in question really isn't physically discernible from the rest of the property. It all looks like one big field, even though, in fact, there's several properties with this alley right-of-way in the middle of it. So by abandoning this alley right-of-way, that allows all of these properties to be combined into a single parcel, so that when you go to do the site plan and do the construction of the townhouses, you don't have setback issues and things like that. You can treat it as one large piece, which is to an advantage for this type of development. Since the time of the proposal that went to the residences, this was considered by Planning Commission at their meeting in January, and they voted to recommend an abandonment ordinance for this right-of-way, which would include not retaining any stormwater or utility easements.
All right. Does any member of the council have questions for staff?
I'll just confirm. The other alley is a public alley that we're responsible for. Is that correct?
That's correct. On the picture on the slide, that's the one that is in the foreground, is running off towards the right of the picture. That is an open and public alley. That is not being considered for abandonment by this ordinance.
Right. And it needs some maintenance, so.
All alleys periodically do.
I'll ask a question. You started as you began the description of this particular alley that we're discussing abandonment as unopened. Can you expound a little on what that means? I think this picture helps with that.
We define an unopened alley as one that is not open to vehicular traffic. So as far as we can tell, looking at what records we have, we haven't found any evidence that it was ever used for vehicular traffic. This particular area was platted in 1900, so the alley dates back 117 years, plus or minus.
Wow. Any further questions?
What is the current zoning of the properties?
R3. And that includes the entire block, so it's not only the property where they're looking for the development of the townhouses, but the rest of the properties in that block as well. They're all zoned R3.
Did I understand you say that the residents that were against this were not, they were against the project entirely, not necessarily the alleyway?
The questionnaire that was sent to them said, "Are you in favor of abandoning this alley, yes or no?", to where they could check a box, and then it could add comments underneath, which were included in your packet. The comments that were received talked about the townhouses project. They didn't address the alley abandonment. That is inherently part of that project, but they just talked about the concept of having townhouses there in general.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no further questions, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Ordinance 18-2? Were there other further comments from those of us on Planning Commission that are relevant to?
I think if it was unanimous and we didn't spend a lot of time talking about it.
It was pretty much as Mr. Metzger had explained. The zoning does allow for the townhouse project. The project will go forward with or without the abandonment of the alley, and the comments did not particularly address the alley abandonment as much as the townhouse project.
That's correct.
Which is covered by zoning.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we had no persons present at the Planning Commission meeting to speak against the project.
That's also correct.
Okay. All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? All right. Seeing none, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Yang?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Next, we have Ordinance 18-3, amending the zoning ordinance to clarify the residential density permitted in the B3 general business zone. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize Ordinance 18-3?
Yes, Mayor, this is a housekeeping measure. As you may recall, last month, you approved an ordinance that amended the densities in actually three residential districts and one commercial district, the B3 district. The narrative speaks to the B3 district in the previous ordinance is accurate. There was an attachment, attached chart, to add further clarity to the administration of the ordinance, and the clarity had not, or the attached chart had not been properly updated. So this is, like I said, this is a housekeeping measure, and we go through the process again, but the narrative in the original ordinance is accurate as stated.
All right. Does any member of council have questions for staff? All right. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Would any member like to discuss Ordinance 18-3? Hearing none, I believe, oh, would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for the vote, so Tara, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Yang?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Ordinance 18-4, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning property located at 820 Raytheon Road and 96 and 98 Vance Tank Road. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize Ordinance 18-4?
Yes, Mayor, Ordinance 18-4 is considered on first reading this evening, and as you ended, as you indicated, it's a zoning map amendment. Last month, staff received a request from Blaine Carter, owner of 820 Raytheon Road, and Jeremy Waldron, owner of 98 Vance Tank Road, to rezone their property, which is currently, has a current zoning designation of R1A. They request to rezone this to M1, properties located adjacent to the old Raytheon plant, which has a current zoning designation of M3. There's a third parcel involved at 96 Vance Tank Road, which is owned by BTS. This is a site of the power substation that served the old Raytheon plant. Staff has communicated with BTS, and they do not oppose the rezoning from R1A to M1. I think with that, I'm going to ask Blake Ayler, our zoning administrator, to come to the podium and further detail this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, council members. As Mr. Sora stated, this is a rezoning request in front of you tonight. This is for properties at 820 Raytheon Road, 96 and 98 Vance Tank Road. The owners are Mr. Blaine Carter, Mr. Jeremy Waldron, and of course, BTS with their substation. At 820 Raytheon Road, this is for the western half, which is approximately 31 acres of that site, and it would include the entire parcels of 96 and 98 Vance Tank Road. The properties are currently zoned R1A, which is low-density, single-family. They're looking to go to M1, which is light industrial/business zone. All in total, it does contain approximately 33.7 acres, and it consists primarily of grass fields and a wooded region, and of course, BTS's substation. Here you will see a location map. The area is outlined, hatched in red, is the area requesting the rezoning. Again, the big parcel is 820. The two smaller parcels you see are 96 and 98 Vance Tank Road, and that is that western half of 820 going toward the old Raytheon plant. Here you will see 98 Vance Tank Road. Used to contain a building years ago. It's been demolished, and now it's a vacant site. This is immediately adjacent to the former industrial site next to it, Raytheon. This is 96 Vance Tank Road, which is BTS's substation, and this is facing 820 Raytheon Road, which is that western portion of it, and you'll see there are grass fields in the bottom, and it slowly slopes up and levels out for a good degree, and then it turns mountainous toward the rear, very far rear portions of the property. This is our future land use plan and policy, and again, that's what we use to guide us in future zoning designations and rezonings. And you will see the property is highlighted, denoted with the red circle, with the majority of this property being shown, with that western half falling as being denoted in that gray area, which is industrial. So primarily, all of the property that is up for the rezoning is denoted. So primarily, all of the property that is up for the rezoning is denoted as industrial. And again, the city's future land use map indicates the area will be developed primarily as industrial. This does meet policy 3, which is to sustain existing commercial areas while providing for adequate and compatible growth and expansion. It also meets policy 4, which is to provide land and infrastructure to sustain and promote industrial growth, utilizing the M1 zoning with its low-intensity industrial uses, as well as it offers the full range of commercial uses within the B3 district. It provides a step-down zoning buffer between the remaining R1A that would be on the eastern half of 820, and as well as the former Raytheon plant being M2. Planning Commission sent a favorable recommendation for the request of rezoning at their January meeting, and with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you all for any questions you may have.
All right. Questions council has for staff? Did you, did you have any responses as this was advertised?
We had some calls, we did advertise, we did send letters to the adjoining property owners. We had some calls who seen the signs out. They were curious more than anything about what the potential use of the property would be. At this time, we don't have any plans submitted, nor do we know what that would be. I did not receive any negative responses to the request.
Thank you.
Mayor, a rezoning of this nature will require a public hearing next month, so there will be opportunity for the public to make comment prior to your consideration on second reading.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Would any member of council like to, hold on, let me back up. Is there a motion to take action?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 18-4? Hearing none, would any member of the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready for the questions. Tara, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Renning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
All right. More zoning. The next item, we're on to second readings of ordinances, the next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance 18-1, amending the zoning ordinance to establish design standards for the B1A and B1B districts. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve, and I want to clarify that we, a yes vote removes the language as originally voted upon for the general merchandise stores, but retains the language for establishing the design standard.
That is correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 18-1?
Danielle, for the record, would you please state specifically what a yes vote would be?
If you vote yes, then you're voting for the amendment, the ordinance as it's currently before you. At your last meeting, you deleted the text in paragraph 2 that dealt with adding a new use, so that text is no longer part of the ordinance. What's in the ordinance now are regulations about the design standards. You'd be adding design standards to the zoning ordinance in the B1A and B1B.
So for the record, could you specifically state what we did delete?
I'm afraid I don't have the original language in front of me, but it said that you would be adding the use of general merchandise stores to the B1A zone, if I recall. So that is, oh, I'm sorry, B1B. So that's no longer in the ordinance.
So if we voted yes for this, we would be voting for the design standards, but there would be no further movement in regard to a general store?
No, you have taken that out of the ordinance, it's not there anymore.
Just want to be sure that we all know what we're voting.
Any other comments? I'll add, we had a lot of discussion last month about this, and I think an important part of this, there was concern with how it wasn't quite lined up when we looked at zoning across several of the affected areas. It wasn't consistent with the long-term land use plan, and so that's part of why we decided to delete that. There were also some other concerns, but we have to look at these zoning opportunities as what those properties that are currently zoned that way could be down the road. And as we looked at that, we see an opportunity to help align some of the zoning in some of these that really don't fit with adjacent properties or their specific location within a neighborhood or other community. So as we do this, the planning department's work is never done, and this has given them a little more work, and it's just a matter of how it fits in our overall goals and objectives.
I could add to that also, the design standards that we had quite a bit of discussion about, and is going to be on work plan. And hopefully, I think all of us up here are hoping that as we look at design standards and look at what is being done in our tri-cities and other opportunities, that we can look at what we have and see where we have opportunities to improve some of the looks of some of our areas, and also do it in such a way that it helps businesses by looking more attractive and bringing more people in. So I think that's kind of what we're hoping with our work with as we look at design standards. And what we're passing today are minimum wants that we have in place in other overlay zones, and so we're hoping to be able to look more in-depth and see what opportunities are.
This has been a complicated ordinance all the way around, and it's not ideal. We did not have a favorable recommendation from the planning department. Blake, is that anything that you want to address? I don't know that I had a clear understanding of why they did not agree with the ordinance, other than they just didn't understand why we did not pass
The original one.
The original one, which my comment was that we had citizens to make an appearance and voice opposition against it, that we took that into consideration, and also that we're going to be looking at our entire city for rezoning. And so hopefully, while this is not ideal, in the near future, we'll have something that is closer to what we're looking for going forward.
That's correct. To my knowledge, at the meeting, there wasn't a definite answer given as to why they wanted to stick with the original vote. I think they felt, just general conversation, that it was best.
I think it's important to note, in local government especially, that we have several layers to our processes, and the layers are there very purposefully so that our community has as many opportunities as possible to express their position, positive, negative, whatever. And I think in this situation, to reiterate what Councilwoman Renning said, is that we did hear, we didn't have necessarily, we weren't stormed at City Hall, so to speak, but we had a lot of comment to come to council that perhaps did not make its way to the Planning Commission. And at the end of the day, it's, the decision is made here, how we move forward, and I think it's important to understand that we have done our due diligence in regard to this. And based on situations that have presented themselves previously, we are taking the zoning very seriously. We are trying to look at the overlay throughout the city. It takes time, it takes a lot of due diligence, and there are a lot of legalities involved. And so we are very fortunate to have the city attorney that we have, and the legal department that we have, and the planning department to go through this. We have been made aware that we need to be more cognizant and more focused on zoning to be sure that the neighbors in any one given area are not encumbered by a business that would not maintain their property values. So we have heard in this situation, and we, you know, have discussed it thoroughly, I believe.
The public had comment, had the opportunity to comment during the issue of public hearing, so with that, I believe we're ready for the vote. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Renning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to resolutions. Next, we have resolution 18-8, approving tax increment financing incentive for the Tonava Hotel Project located in the Green Property/West State Street Redevelopment District. Mr. Sauer, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to do a quick summary, because I really want the developer to speak about this project, and this is one of the more exciting projects that we've had in our community in a long time. We do have with us tonight Brian Deal, who is the developer. We also have Joel Conkin with the legal representation, or legal representative for Bristol Housing Authority. As indicated, this is a request for tax increment financing in support of the project. As Mr. Conkin will discuss with you earlier, this is a critical, the TIF financing is a critical incentive in order to advance the project. It is located in a redevelopment district, so it makes it eligible for use of TIF financing. Resolution 18-8 authorizes the financing incentive, but it also requests the county commission to also favorably support a TIF incentive for this project. With that, Brian, would you, would you like to step to the podium and present this project to city council?
I'm Brian Deal with Tonava LLC, and I'm proud to present to you all our proposal for a full-service hotel in downtown Bristol. Our proposed hotel location is between the Chamber of Commerce on West State Street and Shelby Street. The project site is located in downtown Bristol in a once-flourishing industrial site from the 1920s to the 1980s. And the newly expanded Green Property District goes from Volunteer Parkway up West State Street to 18th Street. And our hotel is positioned to be the cornerstone development that spurs other development up the newly expanded Green Property Redevelopment District. The site is, that's
John, can you, I think we've got a technical, Terry, can you help with that?
There's another, there's another car.
Okay.
Terry moved down, no, he didn't.
I'm sorry.
I watched Terry move down, he knew.
And as he's pulling that, Mr. Deal, if you can, Mr. Deal, if you can just adjust your mic a little bit so that they can pick you up a little bit better. Thank you.
This is our project site, which is located behind the Chamber of Commerce in between West State Street and Shelby Street. And like I said, this is the old industrial site from the 1920s to the 1980s. And this is the newly expanded Green Property District that goes from Volunteer Parkway up West State Street to 18th Street. The hotel is positioned to be the cornerstone development that spurs other development in the newly expanded Green Property Redevelopment District. The site is currently a mixed-use area of residential and industrial sites. One of the challenges in locating a hotel in this district was the need to purchase several small lots to create a larger development. And the site also presented several development challenges due to its past uses and environmental concerns associated with these uses. The once-flourishing site had a fir hide and herb storage area, a wholesale grocery warehouse, wholesale tobacco shop, an SO gas storage facility, a furniture store, automobile sales, auto repair shop, and an old railroad property. Today, the site is comprised of a used tire store, vacant warehouses, car storage lot, free service tire and auto center, an old railroad property, and a used car lot. The used tire store visible here is in need of some repairs, and the structural repairs to this would not be permissible today due to the current building codes and its location in Little Creek floodplain. This is a view of the old fir hide and herb storage facility and the old SO gas storage facility visible from Cootie Brown's parking lot. This is a view of the wholesale grocery storage warehouses visible from the Chamber of Commerce. And this is the current free service tire and auto center. Since free service has had a viable business at this location, for a while, Tonava's worked with free service to help relocate them up West State Street. And the current image is a vacant lot, once home to State Street Motors LLC, and part of this site will be used to relocate free service. Our proposed project is a full-service hotel under a nationally-recognized brand flag. It will be locally owned and operated, and it will fill the need for Bristol, Tennessee's need for meeting and banquet space, accommodating crowds of 250 to 400 people. And since most of the new hotels are on the Virginia side of town, the Tennessee side of Bristol's been missing out on the sales tax, occupancy tax, and property tax revenues generated by people traveling to the greater Bristol area. And the current offerings for lodging on the Tennessee side of Bristol average 20-plus years in age. Our proposed design is a modern six-story structure that will complement other structures in the downtown area. In our conceptual site plans, we created additional parking spaces in excess of city and franchise requirements, and we've optioned these additional parking spaces to neighboring businesses to help alleviate their parking needs in good faith and to show our willingness to be corporate citizens. We also plan on donating some of the property we acquired to the city to extend the right-turn lane on West State Street to help alleviate current traffic problems. During the construction process, we also plan to work hand-in-hand with the city to help fix some of the existing traffic problems. Our ground floor plan includes a restaurant and indoor pool exercise facility, 7,800 square feet of meeting and banquet facility, and we also plan to add a rooftop lounge and bar viewing area available to guests and the public. Designed to meet or exceed Bristol's green initiatives, we'll be incorporating living walls on the interior and exterior of the building, as well as live roof products surrounding the rooftop lounge viewing area. Tonava also plans to work with TDEC to improve the natural quality of the Little Creek area by creating a green space that's aesthetically pleasing to visitors while using natural elements to help improve the creek bank stabilization. We're also planning to implement a water filtration system to help naturally repair the currently impaired creek. And this would be a view from that rooftop bar lounge viewing area with good views of the downtown area. We're looking at a $22 million investment in downtown Bristol with this project. Tourism is a vital component of our local economy. Sullivan County was ranked number seven in the state based on expenditures in domestic travel in 2016. Expenditures in Sullivan County totaled $370 million, with $104 million in wages paid to employees. On average, each dollar of expenditure results in an additional 63 cents of secondary sales and 34 cents in workers' earnings. Our property is uniquely situated to capture an even greater portion of the overnight travelers in our market who might otherwise stay in surrounding counties. The closest hotel to Bristol Motor Speedway providing this level of service and amenities, and we're going to be within walking distance of historic downtown, including the Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion and the birthplace of Country Music Museum. The hotel guests will also benefit neighboring restaurants and businesses in the downtown During the construction phase, we plan on creating 100 jobs with an average salary of $25 an hour. Our materials will be sourced locally when possible, and labor will also be contracted locally to the greatest extent possible. During the operations, we plan to create 85 jobs in the hotel and restaurant with average wages of $20 an hour. These will be full-time positions with full benefits and 401K. Average estimated economic impact from the hotel operations is approximately 7.7 million in gross output per year, and that's factored using the REMS to multiplier. The tax revenue, projected annual city tax revenue is $227,000 annually. $193,000 of that will be created through the occupancy tax. $8,600 will be the food sales tax, and alcohol by the drink will be $24,000, and then we have a miscellaneous sales tax of about $528 annually. The proposed hotel will also be a catalyst for growth in downtown Bristol, Tennessee. The economic impact from the project will begin when the first shovel hits the ground, and it'll create a steady flow of money into the area through job creation. The additional The additional money brought to Bristol, Tennessee from the hotel primarily comes from people outside the area, and since the hotel will be locally owned and operated, the majority of the money made will stay in the local economy. The hotel will also benefit current businesses in the downtown area because current hotel travel trends show that the modern traveler prefers to park their car and walk to amenities such as restaurants and entertainment, thus making this an ideal location. We predict that the hotel will also have a ripple effect on future development projects in the downtown area and in the newly expanded redevelopment district. Thank you.
All right. Next, I believe we have Mr. Conkin. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Joel.
If you'll stay on standby, you can have a seat, but there might be a couple of questions as we follow up.
Good evening. Is that a little better? I'll be brief. I think everyone here is familiar with the TIF process, so I just want to hit some of the highlights of this particular TIF amendment. This is designed to be a fifteen-year TIF on the city of Bristol side. Not to extend beyond the tax year 2036. There's some, we give a little bit of leeway in the timing because we're not exactly sure what tax year the project will be complete, so when you start doing the math, it could be 2020, it could be 2021 on the far end. We certainly hope for 2020, but that's why there may seem like there's an extra year there, just to give a little bit of room. The max incentive under the plan, the max TIF incentive is capped at five million dollars. I think the reality is, just for your information, we've gotten a little bit of some updated numbers from the assessor's office, and we expect the assessment may not be quite twenty-two, based on a twenty-two million dollar appraised value, maybe in, more in the eighteen to nineteen million dollar range, but, so the actual incentive would probably be in, somewhere in the three-point-five million dollar neighborhood, possibly to four million dollars. I just didn't want anyone to be under any misunderstanding because there's so many variables in how the TIF amount is calculated and variables moving forward based on tax rate, debt service, the actual appraisal, that there is a little bit of flexibility. That's why we set it with a cap instead of a precise number. The actual final amount will be determined based on the lending institution. So I think that's probably the key points. Obviously, we, the housing authority enters into a development agreement with the developer to ensure that the project's built as it's being proposed to the city council, you know, with the features and amenities and the square footage that has been set forth in the proposal. Any questions?
Yeah, we could just review what the process is. So it comes before us for a TIF, and then we're also, it's being taken to Sullivan County as well for their process. And it goes through some committees before it goes to the commission, is that correct?
The standard process with county is to go on first reading. They do typically require it to be passed on multiple readings. Usually, we go to the finance committee and any other committees that the county mayor may recommend to do a similar presentation to them. We expect to go for first reading this month and then for second reading in March.
And to touch on that, before it got here, Bristol Housing had the public hearing and recommended it, and so that's why it's here with us this month. Any further questions of Mr. Conkin, staff, or of Mr. Deal? All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion to take action?
Nation, second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution eighteen-eight?
I could just say, which we could share, that council has seen the proposal prior to this meeting. We met individually and had fantastic presentation and just thrilled to see this opportunity and just a few of the things that Mr. Deal pointed out that I think, to me, are so exciting. And a basic one is redevelopment, that for this area, this will be outstanding to really change, be a game changer, as we say, for one. The other is demonstration of some of the living walls and some of the things that we don't have here, don't see in Bristol yet here, so breaking some new ground and really kind of demonstrating to folks what could be done. Also, the water quality, I believe, at least in the not-so-distant past, both Little Creek and Beaver Creek are listed as three-oh-three D creeks, which is really bad, and a lot of that is not our fault. It comes from the farmland up in southwest Virginia as well as runoff. So improvement with that is certainly a wonderful thing to see happen. And then the wages, very exciting to see some higher wages and benefits for jobs that sometimes don't have those opportunities. And then lastly, we talked, I think during the presentation, a lot about it being a family project and planned to be locally run and opportunity here for a long, long time. So those are some of the things that I find really exciting about this opportunity. And I hope I took everybody to what everybody else was going to say.
I'm so excited about this project. I'm one-hundred-and-ten percent behind it. I was able to jot down ten bullet points. Number one, it's the biggest development that's going to come to Bristol, Tennessee in several years. Increase in revenue, increase in job, an increase in new outside money coming into the area. The design is great. We need the meeting space. It's going to be locally owned. It's a new development in the downtown area that we really need. It's going to be the tallest building in Bristol, and it's going to spur additional downtown revitalization around it, which we've been striving for and trying to get more development on West State Street. So we need this to happen. We want it to happen, and hopefully the community is behind it as much as we are, and we can make this happen.
The number-two industry in Tennessee is tourism, only behind agriculture. This certainly fits right in with that, and it meets those requirements for redevelopment as Vice Mayor Fire Robin mentioned. Being part of tourism fits right in with all the pieces that we have to be able to offer of what Bristol is. So it's a great opportunity to improve some properties. It certainly meets those requirements, and then to see the investment and what it can be is going to be seen for some time, it appears. So thank you very much, both of you, for your presentations and all the work and energy and the partners and whoever else, and we'll look forward to hearing those further announcements from you as we see what the other details are when those become available, so.
I have just a couple of comments. Number one is, I'm sure, or I hope that everybody realizes that the developer that stood before us today went to Bristol, Tennessee City Schools, and so we're very proud that someone from home is making this happen. It will be an absolute game changer for downtown. Something that you may or may not know about Mr. Deal is that he is a conservationist and an outdoorsman. Very few people call TDEC and ask to meet with them to bring them up to speed as to the project. He has, and has a good working relationship, my understanding, with TDEC. I think it's wonderful when, you know, we're always looking for, you know, industry to come in or businesses to come in from out of town. I think it's especially exciting when we've got businesses being cultivated and developed from within, so thank you. And I'm real excited about it, too. It's just going to absolutely change a huge part of our downtown area. So thank you for bringing it to this.
One last point that wasn't brought up that I think is very important, and the RIMS II was referenced in economic impact. For every dollar spent, it has a ripple effect of another dollar, and that's very evident and true in new businesses such as this that are opening up. And as we work through zoning and planning and visioning throughout the city, that is one of the hugest impacts that we can possibly make on other businesses and other jobs. So just want to say, this, your numbers were well-studied and are very accurate as well.
And one last thing, I hope that the county, and I feel certain that they will, will see this project as we see it. It's not only to the city of Bristol's and our region's advantage, but it's to Sullivan County's advantage as well. And I think you made a very good point, from the time that that first shovel goes in or the first piece of machinery is started, we have local jobs that are, you know, being able to be paid and generate that revenue back into the economy. And what's good for Bristol is good for the county, and I feel confident that our county commissioners will embrace this as well, hopefully.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter?
Please, sir. Do I need to step up?
Yes, please.
The project looked very well and had great potential, and certainly it would be great to have in the area. Have we considered the three hotels they have down near the, our, the new place they have down, down, down the interstate eight-one? If memory serves me correctly, one of those hotels only been down in there somewhere around about seven, eight years, if memory is serving me correctly, and you have three of them. This one right here being set where it is, is it going to cause all three of those to close up? And then is the tax money from one to the other going to be worth the new hotel being put there versus the other three that's already there? That's something that I don't know if you thought about or concerned about, but I'm sure that everybody that's down there working right now wouldn't care too much about another project coming up there that would put them out of work.
Other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Malin Latrell. I'm a resident of Bristol, Tennessee, and operator for business in Bristol, Virginia. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Deal here for the fine presentation you put on tonight, and I want to speak out in favor of the project as a citizen and as a business operator. I too am an operator of a business that brings tourism to the industry, and I can see where this is a great value for the city of Bristol, Tennessee. The only thing that you left out, Mr. Deal, is that you forgot to say that the hotel will be within walking distance of professional baseball as well. So anyway, again, great job, and I'll speak out in favor of the program.
Let me ask, are there any others who'd like to address council on this matter? Mr. Deal, would you be able to address some of the citizen comment there from Mr. Mayberry regarding the impact on the business?
We've done several feasibility studies in this project, and a lot of it is economic impact, and the number of rooms that have been added to the area, there's no, there's no signs right now of new room count impacting it. The market's been able to absorb the numbers of rooms in the area, and we compared ourselves with those Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee hotels. We are a little different demographic from some of the other hotels as far as our management structures and strategies, and I think our jobs are going to be more full-time jobs where the typical hotels, other ones are more part-time jobs, and we want to hire local people for those jobs, so we welcome the people that are working at the other ones to come apply with us.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to recap that, if I understood correctly, it sounds like the market's able to absorb these, this additional capacity, so it sounds like it won't lead to a potential closing, but it does, it does be able to support the capacity and meet the needs of what we have as a community and for some additional people to be able to come visit and have another option, so. All right. Anything else from council here? All right, I believe we're ready for the vote then. I don't see anybody else coming forward to, for comments, so Tara, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mary Young?
Yes. All right, this brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd be glad to. First, let the minutes of the January second, 2018 city council meeting. The Resolution eighteen-nine, accepting a portion of Hattledale Farm Road as a public street. Resolution eighteen-ten, approving an agreement with the Town of Bluff City for the treatment of wastewater. Resolution eighteen-eleven, awarding a bid for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck or service body. Resolution eighteen- twelve, authorizing the purchase of equipment for police vehicles. Resolution eighteen-thirteen, authorizing the purchase of software support for the fire department. Resolution eighteen-fourteen, approving some middle-of-a-grant application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security under the assistance, under the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
All right. Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Tara, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mary Young?
Yes. All right, that brings us to our Board of Liaison, Board of Education Liaison report. We have Dr. David Welch with us. As he's coming up, I want to say thank you to Mr. Steve Seifers, Executive Director at Bristol Housing, for being here, former mayor of Stateon for attending. You saw Mr. Latrell from Bristol Baseball, and also, yeah, I think I got them all, so.
Good to go.
Dr. Welch.
Thank you, Mary Young, and members of the council, members of the city management and so forth. The privilege to become before you all today, thanking you, filling both literally and figuratively large shoes for Gary Lilly, Dr. Lilly, who's attending the toss, which is this Tennessee Organization of School Superintendent's Meeting, Legislative and Curriculum Meeting in Nashville today. Asked me to share two things. One of them humorously was going to be in conjunction with your comprehensive annual finance, which has been postponed, but the good news is this city school system also has undergone a rigorous accounting finances study, and ours are also, as I expect yours will be, in great order. Nothing noted there, and I attribute that much to Becky Adams and her oversight, as she's our CPA and taking care of that work, and I was amazed at the amount of money that passes through our schools, and that has to be properly accounted for, so we're pleased with that. And the other thing I'm excited to share with you this evening is the awarding of the Work Base Learning Grant that was applied for last year. Bristol City School System is one of twenty-nine districts that have been awarded the twenty-five-thousand-dollar development grant that will be used specifically in CTE, Comprehensive Training Education, focusing on summer-based and four-credit-paid internships of our rising seniors this summer, and then as well for summer-based workforce development and exploration for the early rising ninth, early high school at-risk students. So it's got a couple of components on that, and you all were instrumental, as well as the Bristol Chamber of Commerce and the Bristol Industrial Development Board, along with BTES, in securing that grant, so it's worthy of celebration and applause. Thank you for that, and we look forward to seeing all that will come about. That's it for me. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sora, city manager's report.
Yes, I have just two, three items. First, the Walker Collaborative, and that's our consultant that's performing the downtown action plan, has been in town today, will also...
Action Plan, has been in town today, will also be in town tomorrow, interviewing our strategic partners in our downtown. Reminder that you all are part of that, and, uh, and you're slated, uh, to meet with the, uh, with the consulting firm at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon in the ANX conference room. Also, on Tuesday, September the twenty-second, at ten a.m., we will have our uncoupling, um, February, excuse me, what did I say, February? What did I say, November? Well, whatever. Anyway, this month, on the- on the twenty-seventh, we will have our- our dedication fire station number five at ten a.m., and our Community Relations Department is working very hard, uh, on that ceremony, along with our fire department. Uh, and then we'll have our work session that afternoon at five-thirty in ANX, and a key element of that will be their, our, uh, capital improvement plan that will be rolled out, and that's the, uh, I guess, the second step in our budget process for fiscal twenty-nineteen.
Would you briefly add one more item?
Sure.
And just touch base, one of those topics here recently has been trees.
Okay, the, uh-
Of the downtown nature.
The trees in the downtown have been re- have been removed. Uh, the, uh, the new piping has been placed, and the plant material is, uh, has, the new plant material has been reinstalled, and we're now, it's up to the contractor to- to make the plantings, and- and I- I think we're ahead of schedule. I think, Tim, Terry, I think you all would agree, um, and- and that's in spite of some inclement weather, that, you know, the same crews that do that work are the same crews that address our road conditions during winter weather events. So, uh, uh, and my compliments to the staff in their coordination of that effort and- and how fast and smoothly, uh, that prog- that, uh, project has proceeded.
I think they may get hired out or something. They made it look like it was extraordinarily easy, so we thanked all the people who worked on it, but tell them they needed to make it look harder for us to thank them even more, so. I- I, it, I think it was, I think everybody was surprised at how they lifted out. Is that true, Terry, back there?
Yes.
It's, uh, pretty interesting.
Thank you for that addition to the report. Uh, City Council comments?
Okay, I'll go first. Hotel project, really excited about that. I'll reiterate again, the economic impact of that is- is gonna be huge, and hopefully that also fuels West State Street and the expansion of businesses there, opening of new businesses. Uh, it's gonna be, it's, uh, uh, looks to be really, really nice. Um, comprehensive plan, working forward on that. Uh, was at the last meeting. Um, looking forward to seeing exactly the results from that and how we step forward into that over the next few months. Um, and I also mentioned, um, our new, the new name of our hospital, Ballad Health. Um, and I will say this, that the team at Ballad hit the road running right when the news came out, and I mean commercials were on television everywhere about, uh, prospective areas that our community is in need, and so, uh, uh, looking forward to seeing exactly how things unfold with Ballad Health.
Uh, to piggyback onto Chad's comments, the trees downtown, the new project, uh, West State Street Redevelopment District, and a consideration for, uh, the Volunteer Parkway. At our latest, uh, work, uh, session, we, uh, discussed in detail about, uh, you know, the Volunteer Parkway, and, uh, we're just at the beginning stage of that discussion, but we see this project, along with the downtown with the trees, with the redevelopment district out West State, as really, and along with tomorrow, our Downtown Action Plan, wow, what a lot of, you know, great things to be happening, and, uh, we're excited. We, uh, see all of this as, um, as really moving our community forward. So, thank you to all involved with that. You know, you never hope to need our EMTs, but when you need them, it sure is great when they come quick, get you on a backboard, put you in an ambulance, take you to the hospital, get you in and give all the details. I had two of the nicest EMTs to come and get me up off the floor a few weeks ago, and I believe that it was because of their great care that I had, uh, the recovery beginning that I did have, and so I'd like to compliment our EMT staff and our, uh, quick response there. To the school system, you know, once a teacher, always a teacher. Congratulations on the Work-Based Learning Grant, and to be one out of twenty-nine to receive it is very impressive. Just when we think that maybe things will slow down a little bit, it's somebody puts the pedal all the way back down and off we go. We're primed to make great strides again in twenty-eighteen, and, uh, we appreciate the public's confidence that you've placed in us to move our community forward. Thank you.
Um, some of the most exciting news that we've had recently is the aerospace park at the airport. Right at the top of the list is the new hotel. Um, and for me, at the end of the day, the most important things are always jobs creation, which, um, the above-average salary and the opportunities to work in the tourism industry is gonna be great for this area. Um, the training that- that'll, that'll give our citizens will, you know, expand to many different areas. Um, and the second thing is always education. Great strides are being made in our city school system, and statewide, and something that we adopted immediately after the governor came out with the Drive to Fifty-Five, we were the, one of the first cities to roll out and support that program, um, and we were down in Nashville last week and, uh, was able to watch the last, the governor's last State of the State address. And just to refresh memories, the- the Drive to Fifty-Five goal is we, in the state of Tennessee, we want fifty-five percent of our citizens to have above-high-school education by the year twenty-twenty-five. And when we first started looking at that, I'll be honest with you, I was like, you know what? There's no way we're gonna achieve that, but it's something to shoot for. We knew that we were gonna have to get our high school education rate up, but more importantly, we knew that we were gonna have to educate adults, and that more adults were gonna have to go back to school and obtain more than just a high school education. And in the governor's address, it was announced that we are on goal to meet that two years in advance. So, not only are we going to meet the goal, but we're gonna do it early. So, I'm really proud of our school system for the super job that they're doing with our at-risk students, with educating our future workforce, um, helping our high school students to start obtaining beyond high school credits and degrees, so my hat's off to you guys, and, um, thank you so much for stepping up and creating jobs and doing business in the city of Bristol.
Um, so I wanted to recognize Becky Adams back there who was talked about, but she's also with us, uh, school's CPA, and while I'm recognizing our important financial people, I'll also thank Tara Music for what she does, and that we, when we, uh, get awards and also clean audits, and it just, I mean, you've gotta have that to be able to do everything else. Sometimes we don't value that as much as- as we should. Um, also wanted just to recognize that Brian Deal has his family with him tonight, and, um, that just is really important and says a lot about the project as well, so really welcome y'all and appreciate your being here and being almost last on the agenda, so. Um, I wanted to, uh, thank our city for the Martin Luther King Day celebration. Um, we had, uh, turnout for our first community-wide celebration that we did not anticipate, a large number at the train station, um, and really appreciate both cities for the work that they did for security. Anytime we're having, uh, on-street activities like Rhythm and Roots and Border Bash and parades, et cetera, we're taking special care with our security and, um, taking care of people, so really appreciate everything that was done, uh, and it, it helped it move very smoothly, and it was a great celebration. Um, also, I hope we all support the Tennessee Ernie Ford Day in twenty-nineteen, and I assume we would do a proclamation sooner so they can send that with the postage stamp. Um, it's one of those little things that can really be a big thing, so important for us to do. Somebody, I don't know if Don said it tonight, that Australia has a Tennessee Ernie Ford stamp, so, um, you know.
Amy?
Anyway, um, and also, I'm excited about the downtown study, and I think it's, just shows that we don't want to, and we don't sit on our laurels when we're doing well. We're looking for the next opportunity, so appreciate that. Um, on Ballad Health, I'll just say that, um, they're already underway with, um, the way things will be structured and the way that their mandate is from the states, they have to do a lot in the community, and, um, hopefully it's gonna be pretty broad. I've seen what some of the different, uh, areas they're gonna address, um, but I know one that they're really already working on is our opioid crisis and working on, uh, more treatment and, uh, prevention opportunities, and particularly, I think, um, in-house treatments, centers that we do not have enough of in our area. And treatment is also prevention, because if you can treat people successfully, you're gonna prevent recidivism and relapse. Um, also, we have some other things going along, going on in that area. There's a big workshop in Johnson City on the sixteenth, next Friday, and also a big, uh, conference planned in May that is a faith-based conference that's gonna be at Celebration Church, looking at what our church is doing with their recovery programs, et cetera. Um, and part of that overall is trying to change the, uh, stigmatism that, uh, drug abuse can have in our communities, um, when it is actually a disease that people need help with. Uh, and lastly, I just wanna say we did take, um, a trip to Nashville, and usually we meet with our legislators here in the tri-cities, and this is for our tri-cities legislative agenda that we approved in October, November, December, or something like that. Um, we try to work regionally, we agree on the, uh, areas that we can let, um, can push together, work together with our legislators on for Kingsport, Johnson City, and us. This year, instead of meeting them with them here, we tried something different, went to Nashville, also tried to have more of a dialogue with our legislators, um, and I know I was really pleased, I think the legislators were pleased. Also, it was very nice to spend some time with our Kingsport and Johnson City folks and get to know them a little bit as well. Um, so really appreciate, Kingsport hosted that, uh, event this year and did an excellent job with, um, all the logistics. That's it, thank you.
Great opportunity in Nashville this- this last week. Um, I thank the legislators for their involvement and their perspectives of some of the activities and what they see as headwinds and opportunities. Um, let me, let me jump over to education real quick. Uh, Dr. Welch, as we have an opportunity with, uh, some of those internship opportunities, I think there's some great opportunity you already have with relationships inside, whether it's manufacturing or some related type things, but I think that would be something we would all be- be willing to help get the word out about how we can help spread the message and make sure that our, uh, our local, uh, whether it's industrial infrastructure or some of those others through IDB or networks can, um, engage that and- and show their It's always great to have some of these highlight opportunities and the- and the local investment to see what, uh, what's being done with this hotel project in a redevelopment district, and, um, you saw the other part of the, uh, really granular details of zoning, and, uh, it- it's all part of the processes. Some takes more time than others. We appreciate, uh, all the work that our staff does routinely, whether it's helping to engage and- and even how you're, uh, working with some of the- the business in that footprint already to try and find opportunities for how they can still fit in in close proximity. Um, I, I, that speaks well to your level of communication and your preparation. I appreciate those things, and I think it- it helps lift the community as a whole, not to go in with a- with a rough-shot approach, but a handshake and let's talk about how we, how this can work, and, uh, it takes a little bit to get all those properties together, too, I'm sure, after you worked through some title issues and whatever else was there. I appreciate the investment, um, that, uh, our- our staff has made. We've had a lot of public works, parks and rec, and a vast number, fire, police, dispatch, and many others who get out and- and take care of us during this inclement weather. And, uh, I'm- I'm glad I haven't had, I- I've had much more positive feedback as we've dealt with these weather events, and, um, it's- it's not without some late nights. We had a recognition dinner a few weeks ago, and one of the fellows had been up for, I think, about eighteen hours, and, um, he was ready to go get a few hours of rest. Um, I applaud our city staff's work to help keep the roads open. That lets business continue, commerce continue, and lets those of us who need to get to our jobs get where we need to go, get the kids to school, and so forth and so on. So, um, I- I applaud our staff and the hard work, and also the, those of you who were able to stay off the roads until they were a little bit safer, so. I see one other comment?
I just am looking over there at Mary Lou Williams, who was on the front page of the newspaper this week, so, um, wanna just say thanks for our health clinic for one year and, um, appreciate, you know, what you're doing, and, um, at some point, we'll get another update and see- see where we are with that, but, and, did you do that article? Thank you for the article, so.
All right, with that, uh, we are adjourned.